Seven o'clock. I will call the meeting of the Select Board of Tuesday, April eighth, 2025, to order. This meeting is being televised, streamed or recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge such at this time.
Hi, MJ, I'm on Zoom.
Hi, Jamie. Thank you.
Hi, Jamie.
Use of flash photography during Select Board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the following conference line, one nine two nine two oh five seven oh nine nine. The Zoom meeting ID is eight nine seven one two two nine three five three eight. The password is all uppercase, B O U R N A. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. I will note that present for the meeting are Jean Isarovitz, Peter Meyer, myself, Mary Jane Misschandrow, and Anne Marie Sarunian. Melissa Ferretti is participating on Zoom, so all notes will be, all votes will be by roll call this evening. We begin with a moment of silence to recognize our troops and public safety personnel. Salute to the flag.
Flag to the religion's chief of flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Next item is report out on executive session, which will be covered in item eight D. Reading of the Select Board Vision and Mission Statements. Would someone like to read the vision?
I can read the vision.
Jean?
Bourne is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community, and the amenities that it affords. Bourne embraces excellent education and offers to citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
Thank you on the mission?
Sure. Bourne will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastlining environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and in partnership with others, Bourne will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
Thank you. Community shout out and recognition. I've got a shout out to Shelby Lynn Palmer for organizing the third townwide character Easter egg hunt this weekend. We hope it doesn't rain. And I have another one for EJ Cabellas of Mezzaluna for his food donation to the Centennial Fire fundraiser this past weekend.
Oh, nice.
Public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here for public comment on a non-agenda item? Okay, so, public comments are allowed for up to a total of 12 minutes at the beginning of each meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for comment. Board members are unable to respond due to posted requirements of the open meeting law. Mr. Dwyer, please introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Bob Dwyer. I'm president of the Pecasset Village Association, and I'm here to give a shout out to Mats Ueki and the crew from DPW for placing a crosswalk sign across the, up by the railroad tracks ahead of our community building. As you recall from a previous meeting, one of the sponsors of the scout troop had asked, requested that some improvements be made there. We haven't, I haven't checked to see whether lights have been improved there, but definitely that sign is recognized, I hope it's more recognized by, by drivers. And since the PVA is a sponsor of the scout troop, we're, we're very much cognizant of the safety of any of our tenants and anybody we sponsor. So, thanks again to DPW for getting that done quickly.
Thank you, Bob. Next item, seven oh five, is the poll hearing. Petition for installation of two jointly owned polls to reroute service from Lincoln Street instead of Main Street. Julie Longo from Eversource, are you on Zoom? Eversource here?
Yeah, she's underneath.
I am.
I'm here. I'm going to be supporting the person from Verizon though. They're on as well.
It's the Verizon person here. You want to introduce yourself?
Yes, I am. I am Kristen Leduke with MBNC on behalf of Verizon here on the poll petition.
Okay, you want to describe your project?
Sure. Verizon, along with Eversource, is replacing two poles on Gardner Road in Eldridge Ave to avoid the coming off, having the service come off of Main Street.
Gardner Road, Gardner Road is a dirt road. It's not a paved road, so I'm curious if they go to move these things and they get, they need to get down there during adverse weather conditions, if it's going to be accessible by any means. I don't know that we have some, there's some property owners that are in the audience here that are going to be affected by this. I'll be curious to hear from them and see what they think about these, about this pole being moved through the chair.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments from the public?
Problem?
You have to come to the microphone and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Mike DeAngelo, fifteen Lincoln Ave, Buzzards Bay. That property runs right by my property, so I really don't know where the poles will be in place because I haven't been shown that.
Can we share screens? We can show it on TV?
I can't.
No, but that's Verizon, that's, does any of them?
Do either of you have the, the, um, the map available that you can share your screen?
Let me try.
Because we have it in our packet here, but...
Right, I mean, I could just log into Zoom and share my screen if I needed to, but...
See, I have it here. Can you see that? Here.
Yep. There we go.
There we go.
Okay.
Show it out.
Uh, let me just move out a little bit. So, the new pole is labeled P six dash three and, um, E six dash one at the corner of, is that Lincoln Ave and Gardner?
Correct.
Where's your house?
Yeah, this, well, this is my property here, and they're going to run lines like this. Why can't they run that line down here and feed that pole? Why are they crossing over from this?
So, is this going from P six to P six one and then all down Gardner Road all around? And how are you getting, is it going?
It looks like they're crossing here and then crossing back and going back here.
Correct. So, from P six to the new pole will be P six one, then down to P six two, which is existing, and then the new pole, P six three.
What is this pole here for?
The P six three.
P six three?
Will be new.
For what though? What is it feeding?
So, it's taking it off of Main Street.
Right, but there's a pole here. Why are we putting it on this side of the road when the pole's over here? Right now, it leads from this pole to this pole here. And I don't know why they're crossing over. You could put a pole right in the middle of this. You got a straight, nice, clean shot, and no wires crossing over. And you could probably go underground from here, this way, and not have a pole. This is the first, I've seen this. I just got a notice. I didn't know where those locations were.
Where's, why is it avoiding Main Street? Where's Main Street in this whole picture?
The bridge is here, this is like, here's the roadway up here. So, you're going in, going down the hill in the Wareham, because that's the bait shop right there before you go over the bridge, so Main Street will be right here.
There's a small right of way there, and it has three poles on it currently, and they wanted to remove two of the poles, keep one pole there, and then move the, one of the poles, which will be moved, and then we'll call it the, um, the one here, the three.
Where are the poles that are being moved, removed?
So, it's, if you drive in the bait, um, the bait shop parking lot, kind of right in front of you, there was three poles there that are just in a right of way, and the request was to remove those poles. We couldn't remove all three of them because one of them, we're going to make a stop there, would be the last pole. We were removing two of the poles, and in that effect, we had to move one of the poles onto Gardner, Gardner. Well, that was the request.
That makes it any easier. I just disagree with these locations, just for the record. The bait shop, it's here, so you're coming over the bridge.
So, who requested that there were poles being removed off Main Street?
Okay.
Oh, you may speak. Introduce yourself, please.
Paul DeAngelo, I own the bait shop, and I...
What was your name, please?
Paul DeAngelo.
Okay.
I own the bait shop in nine Main Street, and those poles go through my property.
Okay.
And there's a right of way that goes out through back, the back, that was removed. And this serves no purpose for us whatsoever, and for future development of my property, I don't want those in my way.
Is there any other comment from the public? Any comment from the board? Do we need to close this public hearing, or do we have enough information?
There's one more person.
Oh, one more person, please come to the podium. Introduce yourself.
Tom O'Connor, three Eldridge Ave extension.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, is Verizon still here?
Yeah, yes, they're here.
Okay, that pole that you intend to set is not going to solve the problem of feeding my service for that, for that house. That pole, um, that pole that you want to remove is actually on the property line, but it is not, in other words, if you put that, that new pole in six three and you bring the triplex down, the secondary, it's going to be on my property, and we can't do that. So, I think you better revision the site, and we have a meeting there. It's like Mike DeAngelo said, it's, there's nothing marked, there's nothing stamped, we're just looking at pictures on a screen here, and it really doesn't do anything for us to satisfy our curiosity here. And I don't know if you've got an engineered site map. I haven't seen one from you people outside of a picture, and it's not going to work for me.
Is Eldridge Ave extension showed on this? Is your house three showed on? You said three, right?
Well, it's brand new.
Oh, so it's not showed on this map at all?
Right here, I guess it's right here. But, the, um, this guy, well, when we went under construction with this, the town engineer actually, you know, this is not Gardner Ave anymore because it's Eldridge Ave extension.
I guess going by what says on the map here.
Yeah.
What's it showing you about?
Gardner Ave.
Wow. Well, the town engineer changed everything, and I'm surprised he didn't, you know...
Tim, are you on the, are you still on Zoom? Is he there?
No, Tim.
I am on.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I thought he was. I thought, I thought.
I thought I saw him, but then I...
You know, I really think that we could have an onsite meeting to, to go over this to straighten this out.
What's the usual process if there are questions about a pole? How do we solve this with the...
I would recommend that you close the hearing and, and deny it and have them reapply.
But then they get the expense, did they, did they have to pay for an expense to apply for this?
What's that?
Did you have to pay when you applied for this new pole? Were you out of money in any pocket for this?
Not yet.
No, I'm just saying if we deny, I don't want to give them an added expense, so I wanted to see if we could continue it.
I would, I would not, I would recommend close and deny, have them come back to you when it sounds like there's more work to be done here.
It's just clarification, it's going to be done. What they want to do as far as even the secondary...
Well, go to the mic because...
Yes, please.
I do know it's, you know, they're joint owned poles, and whenever Source puts their secondary triplex up to feed our house, it's going to cut right across our property, which is against the rule with the, you know, DPU. And I think we got to close it and have another meeting with both Verizon and Eversource. It can be straightened out, there's no question about it, but this is not straightening it out.
Okay. Thank you.
And I agree with the town manager that the meeting should be closed and we look into this further because there's too many gray areas.
Well, no one questions that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. O'Connor. Okay, so, is there any further comment from the public? Is there any, uh, comment from, further comment from the board?
I just think we should, we need to find a suitable resolution to this, and this is, this, for both parties.
Right.
And this, this doesn't cut it.
So, is this a motion, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jean, second by Anne Marie to close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, you can take your screen chair down now so that I can see who's here. Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing. This is a roll call vote. Melissa?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, five zero zero. The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Could we ask for a continuance instead of closing it, and then we can meet with all the parties?
We just closed it.
We, we've closed it already.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I think, I think if it's going to be a new location and new poles, we have to re-advertise anyway, so having a new hearing when you have a new, uh, is probably the best way to go.
Motion.
We'll follow that lead. So, is there a motion to deny?
So move.
Motion by Peter, is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Emery.
No, that was Jean, but you said first. Melissa, Melissa, that was...
Is Melissa, well, motion by Peter, second by Melissa.
Sure.
Unmute yourself fast, damn Melissa.
Quick, too, I was trying.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, Melissa?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Yes.
Emery, yes. Mary Jane votes yes, five zero zero. Motion is denied, so get back in touch with the people in the neighborhood and see if you can come up with a new solution. Thank you. Next item is consent agenda. Thank you for coming in. Next item is consent agenda. Appointment of Bruce McNamie to the Bylaw Committee for a term ending June thirtieth, 2028. B, Bourne High School Best Buddies Use of Community Building for a Car Wash on May eighteenth, 2025 Renewal. C, Approved Letters to a Local Political Party Chairs Requesting List of Potential Election of Officers. And eight D, Ratify the Memorandum of Agreements for FY twenty six to twenty eight with Lyuna Unit B, Lyuna DPW, Lyuna ISWAM, and the Bourne Superior Officers Association, NEFPBA, and to retain as privileged.
On item C, I am one of the chairs, I don't know if I can vote on my own letter. You know, the letter's being sent to me.
You want to separate it out?
It takes the out.
I don't think that's a confluence, conflict really, but...
I don't think it is.
Okay. What?
I don't think it is, but...
I'm just, I'm just noting the fact, that's all.
Yeah, I don't think you need to abstain, it's just noting that you are one of the officers.
Yeah, you can just note it.
Okay, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
A motion to approve consent agenda is as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Jean, a motion by Emery, second by Jean on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none. Melissa?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Next item is licensing and events, nine A. Are we ready to move forward? Are we holding that?
Please table this.
Okay. We will defer nine A. Nine B, New Events: Consideration of Use of Buzzards Bay Park for Celebration of Life Organized by Janine Becker on June twenty ninth, 2025. Is that Janine, you'd like to come and speak? Thank you.
So, we basically just have a family gathering for, would like to do a celebration of life for my father-in-law, who passed away this past December, utilizing the pavilion and the Buzzards Bay Park.
So, questions from the board?
Motion to approve the request for the use of Buzzards Bay Park for the celebration of life, subject to conditions by town departments.
Is there a second? Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie. I just want to note that it's still open to the public, the whole park is still open to the public, so you're welcome to have your celebration.
Right, yes, like, we just want to have the pavilion piece of it so that we could have, like, you know, food and, you know, for family gatherings.
Sounds good. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I know.
Oh, roll call, sorry, sorry. Melissa?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
MJ votes yes, five zero zero.
I voted at the last school committee meeting. They said, all those in favor went aye.
Thank you, you're all set.
You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Next item is Town Administrator's Performance Evaluation. The evaluation was compiled by Elise Accaro, our Human Resources Director, March twenty first, 2025. Each year, the Select Board shall conduct a formal performance evaluation of the town administrator as outlined in her contract. This is a summary of Town Administrator Marlene McCollum's third-year evaluation, February 2024 to February 2025. The six evaluation areas are summarized below with a summary of comments provided. Overall, Town Administrator Marlene McCollum scored a three point zero out of Apostle four point zero, which falls in the category of strong performance. Below, please find a breakdown of summary of each of the evaluation areas. Board support and relations, score three point zero eight out of four point zero. Strong performance. Comments: Marlene does a great job preparing the board for meetings. She maintains a professional working relationship with the board, with continued, consistent and timely communications with the board. Working relationships will continue to grow. Financial management score, three point five four out of four point zero. Outstanding. Comments: This is one of Marlene's greatest strengths. The process is well laid out, and she always presents a balanced budget, well-thought-out capital budget, plan, and a responsible and reasonable future forecast. This fosters a strong sense of trust and responsibility with the taxpayers. Personnel management, organizational leadership, score two point seven three out of four point zero. Strong performance. Comments: Marlene is a results-oriented manager who understands the importance of employee morale, building a team, and retaining good employees. Her approach challenges her staff and holds them accountable in a positive, productive, and collaborative work environment. Community leadership, public relations, score two point five seven out of four. Strong performance. Comments: Marlene demonstrates strong community leadership and public relation skills. She remains unreactive and maintains a level of steadiness. She has had numerous positive interactions and ensures organized and timely responses to public requests and complaints. She has built a good relationship with MassDOT and should continue to work towards a good relationship with MassDEP. The board would like Marlene to continue to work on the balance of her professional work, work on the balance of her professional work ethic and her ability to connect and collaborate with others in a way that makes them feel valued and heard. Overall, the board encourages Marlene to grow in this area. Town operations, infrastructure, score three point one two out of four point zero. Strong performance. Comments: Marlene is consistent in her understanding and demonstrated expertise in managing the town's operations and infrastructure. She has a proactive approach that has been essential this year with buildings and with the cyber incident. Delegation in certain areas may help balance the workload Marlene carries. Personal, professional, individual qualities and professional skills and status, score two point nine three out of four point zero. Strong performance. Comments: Marlene is a competent, dedicated professional who manages conflict and work effectively under pressure. She maintains... She maintains a strong commitment to achieving results and does not hesitate to take action to improve herself or working relationships. Her resilience and willingness to keep trying in the face of adversity is commendable. Thank you, Marlene, for another great year.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is vote, Bob, are you here for item 18?
Yes.
Okay, could we move item 18 up on the agenda? I think it's.
Sure.
Yes, we can do it.
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna take.
All right, so item 18. I think starts on page 76 of our packet. So we had a suggestion from SciTech and I had a conversation with Marlene and town council about sending a violation notice to Comcast regarding section 6.9D of the town's cable license agreement, which is the portion of the agreement regarding PEG access, transport, and cable casting. And section 6.9D references specific HD channel and PEG access certain equipment that they were supposed to provide to Born Community TV within the first three years of the agreement, which was by March 20th, I think, of this year. The select board had written requesting expedited providing of those things. On October 5th of 2023, Comcast had responded that they would provide the material and it was planned to be provided within the 2024 calendar year. It has not been received, so the suggestion is that we authorize town council and the town administrator to send a letter to Comcast and ask them to remedy the situation. Is there any discussion?
I think we need to hold them accountable for what they agreed to in our contract and I mean, it's proven that we need this upgrade.
I mean, it, 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 this is, it's actually equipment that a lot of times we get complaints about people at home not being able to hear us. And this is one of the things that we, this is the equipment that we need in order to be able to
Right.
have clear transmission of our meetings, so.
Well, just better quality and be able to conduct and for the public to be able to, you know, understand and participate.
So it's something they agreed to and I believe they actually withheld some of the money that they were supposed to be paying for PEG access in order to buy the equipment, so yes, hopefully it'll happen. Do you have anything you want to add, Bob?
Yes, I think the non-compliance with this particular aspect of their contract is just the touchstone for many other problems. And I'll leave it to the town council and the select board to decide, but this could be an opportunity in the same letter or an attached letter to ask for an annual public meeting or public hearing and invite the public. And I guarantee you will hear a number of other grievances that will come out at the same time. So I'll leave that to your decision, but again, having them stand up in front of the public and in front of you and justify why they took so long to delay this, frankly, given the very positive financial position that the company is in, I think it'd be an opportunity to really get, hold their feet to the fire and get some response on this and other issues.
All right, well, right now, the agenda item is specifically for authorizing the town administrator and the town council to send the notice regarding section 6.9D of the town's cable license agreement. So is there any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize town council and the town administrator to send a violation notice to Comcast regarding section 6.9D of the town's cable license agreement.
Motion by Anne Marie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Peter, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Melissa?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. And please send a copy when it goes to Comcast, to the board, thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Bob.
Thank you for working through the rest of your long agenda.
All right then. Next item is vote to execute the annual and special town meeting warrants. So.
So move.
Well, the annual town meeting warrant is.
This is just a vote to execute it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just, we're not doing it right, we're just gonna
We're just voting to execute.
We're just voting to post the warrants.
Right.
So in the packet is the annual warrant and then there was a special warrant
Two.
in the packet also, but the special warrant in the packet did not include the wording for question, article one that we had voted at our last meeting, so that was sent as a supplemental packet.
Right.
So the motion should be specific to the articles of the annual town, we should make them separate motions.
Motion to execute the articles of the warrant for the annual town meeting on Monday, May 5th, 2025, 7:00 p.m. at Born High School Auditorium.
Motion by Peter, is there a second? Anne Marie? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Melissa?
Yeah, she gives a thumb up.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
MJ? Yes.
I lost my curse, I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
And a motion to execute and post articles of the warrant for the special town meeting scheduled for Monday, May 5th, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. at the Born High School Auditorium.
As provided in the supplemental packet.
Yeah.
Yes.
Supplemental packet.
Yeah.
Dated for eight, 2025, at like 3:20 something p.m. because the first one, because the other one was they came at 2:52 and then like 3:00 something.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so motion by Peter to accept to post the special warrant as provided in the supplemental packet. And is there, was there a second?
Second.
Second by Anne Marie. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. I'm gonna end with you, Melissa. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
MJ, yes. Melissa?
I lost my curse here, yes.
Five zero zero. Okay, next item is discuss and vote the ballot question for the Southside Fire Station. Is there, is there a specific? Let's see. It's on page 48. The ballot question, shall the town of Born be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and a half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds issued in order to pay costs of planning, constructing, equipping, and furnishing a new fire station facility and ancillary space at 171 Clay Pond Road, including the payment of all costs incidental, all costs incidental and related thereto? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion? Motion by Anne Marie?
Second.
I would just note that we should request the town clerk to make this ballot question one because there is also the referendum, so we do want this to be the first question on the ballot. So to place the ballot question on the annual town election on
May 20th.
May 20th. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Melissa? MJ, yes, five zero zero. And I will note that with a ballot question, although material that is informative can be paid for, anyone who is advocating to vote yes on question one is subject to campaign finance laws. So if there's signs or flyers or whatever supporting the vote yes, it's subject to the rules and campaign finance law regulations. Next. 13, living right along, review any ballot adjustments for FY 26 operating budget. Do we have anything? We did them last week, didn't we?
You did them last week and we'll have the final set for you next week after your earlier vote.
Yeah, okay. Okay, review and discuss all articles and motions for the annual town meeting and begin voting recommendations. So we can go through this pretty quickly, I would think. Is there anything that doesn't have a motion yet?
Yes. Article two, three, and four on the annual. We'll have those motions for you next week.
Okay.
Article one on the special, which needs to be determined by the select board.
Okay. And I prefer not to vote on articles until we actually have motions for them, so I prefer to wait on those. We can, if there's any questions on them or people have any other issues, we can discuss that. But my preference is to, as we go through, to make recommendations to recommend approval of the motion on article one, recommend approval of the motion on article whatever. So that we, it is the motion that we are approving. We are recommending approval of. Okay, so where does this start in our packet?
Fifty. About forty-nine.
Okay, so is there a motion to recommend approval of article one?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Melissa? MJ, yes, five zero zero. Any questions or discussion on the operating budget? Questions or discussion on the sewer budget? Questions or discussion on the ISWAM budget? So we'll do those next week. Article five, is there a motion to recommend approval of the motion on article five, the FY 26 capital budget?
So move.
Just want to keep it consistent, Peter and Jean, I mean. Really?
Sometimes it makes it better unless there's some reason that it makes it easier. I'm just gonna kind of get down to the right page here.
Barry, someone on the phone.
No.
Is that Barry?
Yes, looks like it.
Okay. Okay. So Peter and Jean, any discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Melissa? MJ, yes, five zero zero. Article six.
I will say from someone who's sat on those wooden boots for many years, it is long overdue. I'm getting sick of splinters.
I took a digger on one on the.
Article six is the Jackson Field bleachers. Is there a motion to recommend approval of the motion on article six?
It's not graceful.
So move.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Definitely.
Emery?
Yes.
Melissa?
She lost her.
Yes.
Thank you, five zero zero.
I hope that whoever, the design of these helps with ADA compliance because right now, when you're trying to go up the hill, if you it's a challenge to get up that little hill.
They did.
We discussed that.
Make that. Article seven is the low-pressure sewer grinder pump replacement for the sewer system. Any questions on article seven? Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Melissa? MJ, yes, five zero zero. Article eight is the motion on article eight is for 18.8 million to for the new fire station at 171 Clay Pond Road. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Melissa? MJ, yes, five zero zero. Article nine is a motion to demolish and rebuild the roof at the police station at 35 Armory Road. Is there a motion to recommend approval of the motion on article nine?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Peter, is there a second?
Go ahead, Emery.
Jean, just keep saying.
Might as well just keep it consistent.
It's fine with me. Just make it.
Yeah, just.
Consistent.
Yeah.
You can just, when he says motion, you can just say second. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Article 10 is to install air conditioning in the gun range at the police station. And we did the roof, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion to recommend approval of the motion on article 10?
Motion to approve article 10, recommend approval of article 10. Motion to approve article ten, recommend approval of article ten.
Second.
Second by, motion by Peter, second by Jean. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. I mean, it's, Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Article eleven is the, is the library OPM and designer for the new library at Nineteenth Sandwich Road. Before we make a motion, I want to say something. I don't think it's going to change the motion and I don't think it's going to change anyone else's recommendation, but I, I do want to say a few words. I, I want to explain why I'm going to vote no. First, I want to be clear that I do support a project for the library. What I don't support is moving forward outside of the library grant program. And I think it is important for town meeting to understand what they're voting on. I'm, I'm fine with whatever decision town meeting makes once they have the, all the information. When the OPM request came forward as a capital request this year, I was concerned about the timing of the debt exclusion for the project. So in January, I called the Mass Library Board to find out what the next construction grant round would be so that we could sort of plan to do the design with the OPM and apply for a construction grant. I received a call back in February from the Director of the Mass Library Construction Grant Program. And it was explained to me that they had done a major revamp of their regulations after two-year review. And the new final regulations for the Mass Library Board Construction Grant Program were approved in December of 2022 and implemented in the twenty-three, twenty-four grant round. The new regulations implemented a two-phase grant program. The first phase is planning and the second phase is construction. The grant program requires that a construction project participates in the Mass Library Board planning phase in order to be eligible for construction grant funding. It also explained that the planning grant requirements specifically state that the OPM and the project designer should not be hired before the grant award. And if Bourne went ahead with the OPM, the work done with the OPM, and the project would not be eligible for the construction, the library construction grant funding. I, I feel that the real decision being made is not whether to spend one hundred and fifty thousand for an OPM for a new library at Nineteenth Sandwich Road. The real decision being made is whether town meeting wants to proceed with planning for a new twenty-five to thirty million dollar library that will be fully funded by the taxpayers or whether waiting two to three years for the planned twenty-seven, twenty-eight library grant program makes sense. In order to apply for the library grant in the next round, the town would need to approve one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the library grant planning phase. If we approve the OPM funding now, the funding for the grant planning phase would be an additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The library construction grant program provides fifty percent reimbursement up to a hundred and thousand dollars for the planning phase. In the construction phase, the grant would provide thirty-nine to forty percent funding for a twenty-five to thirty million dollar project. And for a project this size. That would save the taxpayers ten to twelve million dollars. The library trustees have questioned whether Bourne would receive a grant in this competitive process and whether there will be a grant round in 2027. My response is that the Mass Library Construction Grant Program has been funded by state legislature with bonds since nineteen eighty-seven. It is an established grant program with the next grant round planned in two to three years. Bourne was awarded a library construction grant twenty years ago and the voters turned it down. Twenty years later, the need is more and the likelihood of grant approval seems likely. If we truly have an urgent need, our project will be funded. I, I do think it's unfortunate that the library trustees did not submit the library grant application in the twenty-three, twenty-four grant round. They submitted the required notice of intent to apply in April of 2023. Town meeting approved one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for design at the annual meeting in May of 2023. They had thirteen months to complete the application requirements and file the application. However, the application was not completed and filed by the deadline in May of 2024. They've given a lot of reasons about why the application wasn't submitted. I think it should have been submitted and if it had been, we would be having a different conversation. I will be voting no on the recommendation for the OPM for the library project. I am in favor of a project to update the library, but I feel the best chance of success is with a project supported by the Mass Library Construction Grant Program. Because the work done with the OPM under this article would not be eligible for the grant. I think it would be a waste of time, money, and resources. So is there a motion to recommend approval of the article? A motion on article eleven?
Motion to approve article eleven?
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean. Is there any further discussion?
I'll save it for the town meeting floor.
Okay. Roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
And the chair votes no. Four, one, zero. Article twelve is the OPM for the solar panel removal from the board and mental school roof.
Motion to approve article twelve.
Second.
Is there any discussion on article twelve? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Article thirteen, reports and recommendations from committees.
Motion to recommend approval of article thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean. Is there any further discussion? Seeing done, roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa? MJ, yes, five zero zero. Next is article fourteen, which is the CPC Keene House request.
Motion to recommend approval of article fourteen.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa? MJ, yes, five zero zero. Article fifteen, CPC affordable housing purposes.
Motion to approve, recommend approval of article fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Epstein.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, four zero one. Article sixteen, CPC housing authority units off of Waterhouse Road.
Motion to recommend approval of article sixteen.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Epstein.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, four zero one. Article seventeen is CPC Forchester Park.
Motion to recommend approval of article seventeen.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Article eighteen is CPC Comalletti Basketball Court.
Motion to recommend approval of article eighteen.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie? Melissa? MJ, yes, five zero zero. Article nineteen is CPC Phase One Bourne Rail Trail.
Motion to recommend approval of article nineteen.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean. Roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Oh, is there any discussion? Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Okay. Article twenty, CPC administrative expenses.
Motion to recommend approval of article twenty.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Just in case I forget, do you have this marked as essential?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good.
Article twenty.
Article twenty for the administrative expenses.
Understood.
Yeah, yeah. Not the other ones, just.
No, just twenty.
Yeah.
Motion to recommend approval of article twenty-one CPC transfer to reserves.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa? MJ, yes, five zero zero. Twenty-two stabilization fund.
Motion to approve article, recommend approval of article twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Twenty-three capital stabilization fund.
Motion to recommend approval of article twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Article twenty-four, OPEB.
Motion to recommend approval of article twenty-four.
Second.
That's the ISWIM one, right? Where the ISWIM money's coming from ISWIM, going to the OPEB.
Yeah, ISWIM stabilization to OPEB trust.
You already did the motion, right?
Yep.
And second?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Article twenty-five is.
Human services grant program and I recommend approval of article twenty-five.
Forty thousand, right?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Article twenty-six is non-capital department.
Recommend approval of article twenty-six.
Second.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Article twenty-seven is ortho imagery and planometrics.
Motion to recommend approval of article twenty-seven.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Twenty-eight, prudent investor rules.
Motion to recommend approval of article twenty-eight.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Twenty-nine Hero Act CPI.
Motion to recommend approval of article twenty-nine.
Second.
Can I ask you a question about this? It really comes from the, there was some discussion, I think, at the Finance Committee, which, and I have a chance to watch all of, but is, is the Heroes Act already in place for those numbers like the four hundred, seven fifty, a thousand? Or is, and are they adjusted now under accepting this? And then the hundred percent is like, almost like a double jeopardy thing? Is, am I correct, understanding this correctly?
So there is currently exemptions in place that are fixed.
Right.
Article twenty-nine will adjust them on an annual basis per CPI.
Okay.
Totally separately and independently. Article thirty essentially doubles the existing amounts. It's a one hundred percent increase to the existing amount of the exemption.
And then it will be that doubled will be set for, roll call, for CPI?
If both are, if both articles are accepted and approved.
And is one contingent on the other? No, there's no contingency, they're totally separate, so.
Separate and independent.
Okay.
One adjusts it on an annual basis. Article twenty-nine adjusts it on an annual basis. Article thirty doubles it, doubles the amount of the expense.
Four hundred to eight hundred or whatever the different exemptions are.
For, for the one, for the next year only.
And thank you for providing that information from the Assessors' Office about what the, what the amounts were, that was very helpful. Okay, so did we have a motion yet before?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Motion by Peter, second by Jean on article twenty-nine for the CPI on the Heroes Act. Any further discussion? Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa? Did she say yes?
Yes.
Yeah, she did.
Okay. MJ, yes, five zero zero.
Motion to approve, recommend approval of article thirty.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean. Any further discussion on the hundred percent exemption for the Hero Act? Seeing none. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero.
Motion to recommend approval of article thirty-one to downtown sign bylaw.
Second.
And that was updated in the warrant, so thank you, in our handbook, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. And article thirty-two petition.
Based on the town council's most recent email recommendation, both separately. Based on the Town Council's most recent email recommendation, both separating it.
Yeah, so it's not really separating it. So, we're not separating the article. What he said was, what he said was, what the article's really, what the article's really doing is authorizing the petition of the General Court.
Yeah.
There's nothing in the article itself that says to change, amend the bylaws to establish this thing. It's only the, it's really only the, and that's the step one that you have to do anyway. So, the motion.
I'm happy to read it if you want.
Yeah, that, that'd be good.
We vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the Massachusetts General Court for special legislation as set forth below. Authorizing a town of one to enact a general bylaw, authorizing a town of one to establish limits on the use of nitrogen fertilizers with the goal of reducing nitrogen load in Tumoree Water Bodies. In further, the General Court may reasonably vary the form and substance of this requested legislation within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. And the Select Board is hereby authorized to approve such amendments that shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of said petition. An act authorizing a town of one to establish limits on the use of nitrogen fertilizer, Section one, notwithstanding divisions of two K of Chapter one twenty-eight of general laws or any other general or special law. To the contrary, the town of one is hereby authorized to establish by bylaw limits and other regulations on the use of nitrogen fertilizers. Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Yeah, but that's, you're reading the petition, right?
No, that's the motion.
No, that's the motion.
A whole motion? I didn't think it was that long.
That's the motion. Yeah, that's Brian's motion.
Okay.
Lot of words.
Yeah, so, and, and Bill Grant, who was the proponent, you know, accepted that as a motion, so. So, I think the description, and I don't know what the description, it's not a nitrogen bylaw really, it's not, I think we should describe it as authorization to petition the General Court to establish a nitrogen bylaw. So, we're not actually establishing the bylaw, and we'll just have to explain to town meeting that it's a two-step process and we need that, so. It's pretty simple.
Motion to recommend the motion I just read.
Motion to recommend the motion. The moment I said, okay. Is there a second?
Well, I'm not going to support this, so personally, I think this is something that should be handled by the state, and I think enforcement in our town is an issue is enough without making it more complicated. We don't know what the state's going to do in the future, and I, for one, you know, participating because of Water Quality Coalition, maybe doing some other zoning bylaws with regards to runoff in title areas or on marshland areas to mediate, mediate that would be another, there's many ways to skin a cat and.
Or even drainage bylaws.
Right, correct, yeah. So, I feel strongly that having professionals in the mix maintaining this sort of thing is a helpful thing, and I don't want to chase homeowners back to the hardware store to get their own rotary drop spreaders and start throwing everything around themselves. I think that's, that's a bigger issue that we have to contend with, and that's a difficult thing to put as a notice on the town.
So, in order to do any of it, you have to go to the General Court, but you don't want to do any of it.
I, yeah.
I think it's, it's redundant. You know, if the state has something that's, that's in place and it's not being implemented, that's pressure we can put on the state to implement something, not necessarily do our own subset of bylaws.
I think especially too with, with everything happening with the CWMP, and I know this was addressed in Phase Two. I, I just think it's an avenue that, that we shouldn't be traveling down right now. I think we can address, you know, bigger issues with TMDLs and nitrates and.
I appreciate.
With the CWMP, and I, I do, I, yeah, and I think, I completely agree, we should have some drainage laws. I think that would better serve the purpose of, of runoff and than, than this bylaw, or even heading down the path of, and like you said, the, the whole policing can be a real nightmare.
Yeah, it's hard enough to, I've been working for rain sensors on irrigation systems, I feel like my whole life. It's, you know, again, it's something the state has to make a move on, and we can't get people to shut the sprinklers off when it's raining, so.
Right.
But someone just seconded the motion and again just vote my motion down, because it'll be the same effect of not supporting.
Okay.
I mean, I'll second it if you don't.
I'll second, that's fine, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Just to move the, move the vote, yeah.
And then, and then, is, so, so you've, do you have anything else to say that you're not, you're not in favor, right?
I think that's good for now. We can work together in the future, yeah.
But any other comments? Okay, so, seeing none. Jean.
No.
Peter.
Yes.
Emery.
No.
Melissa.
No.
MJ, yes, so two in favor, three opposed. So.
Two, three, zero.
Two, three, zero, yeah. Not recommending.
Not recommending it, yeah.
For the purposes of the handbook, do, do you want this, do you want to take a vote so this, the Select Board recommendation is written, so it is not to recommend approval?
Yeah, that's fine, but motion, motion not to recommend.
That's how we usually state it, right, don't we?
By saying no.
Or we just.
We go through this all the time.
Select Board recommended approval, oh, I see what you're saying, because we, we say, and we declare the vote.
Yeah, so I'm right, so right now I have the Select Board voted two to three to zero to recommend approval of the article, of the motion.
And it went down, it was.
And it went down, so it's awkward when, it's awkward when the vote is not, when, when the vote is not in a positive. So, if the board, if the board does not want to recommend approval of the motion, that's the way I should write it in here.
Well, we could take a supplemental vote, now that we've voted not to recommend.
No, you voted, the motion was to recommend, but it failed.
But it failed.
Okay, but we can, we can, we can have a second motion to make it more clear to people.
That's what I, that's what I would recommend.
I'm just going back to the old way of Bob Troy wanting motions done. He'd rather have you always put it in a positive and vote the motion down.
Yes, but with the way we, the way we kind of voted, so. So, if we could have, we could have, if we could have a motion to have the recommendation in the handbook be, be worded that the Select Board voted to recommend defeat of article, is that what we're recommending? I mean, what, how do we want to do it when it's not?
So, you can say the Select Board voted three to two to zero to not recommend approval of the motion, or you can say the Select Board voted three to two to zero to recommend that the motion be defeated.
I think the first option.
I think not recommend.
Not recommend.
But do we say, so, do, um, we do, so, so we just say recommend approval of the motion? Don't, we used to say with a yes vote in favor of the motion?
I have all that up above. I have the explanation that I, the.
What a yes vote means and what a no vote means?
Yes.
But we have in the past had the vote, the Select Board voted to recommend approval of the motion with a yes vote in favor of the motion. Your yes, a yes vote means yes and no, but the recommendation includes a yes vote or a no vote. The Select Board voted not to recommend approval of the motion with, and a no vote.
By a vote of.
By, with, in.
I have never set up a book that way.
Okay.
I mean, this is the, this is.
That's, right, you haven't set up the book that way, but our cheat sheets, we, we have it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's okay. So, we need a new motion for the handbook recommendation to be worded that the Select Board recommends defeat.
Or do you want to do not recommend approval?
Yeah, the Select Board voted to not recommend approval of Article thirty-two.
Less double negatives.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
For purposes of, and we can just, for purposes of the handbook explanation, thus, we need a motion not to recommend approval, and we can just revote. Three, two.
Yeah.
Yeah, right?
Right, so the.
So, so who, Jean, you want to make a motion to not recommend approval?
I make a motion to not recommend approval.
Second.
For purposes of the handbook.
For purposes of the handbook, Article thirty-two.
Okay, so, on the motion to not recommend approval of the Article thirty-two. Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
No.
Emery.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
MJ, no. Three, two. Okay, and because the Select Board has not recommended approval, we will inform the petitioner that they made the motion.
Yeah, they need to make a motion from the floor.
Okay, that does it. Now, before we move on to the special, altogether, there's thirty-seven articles, which means some people are going to do seven, and some people are going to do, two people are going to do eight. So, if you would just tell me, send me an email with your seven or eight articles that you want to do, I will divvy them out.
We can do it tonight, just go down the list.
Oh, okay. Some of them are just going to be, like CPC is, you know, the ones that are sponsored by CPC.
Just, just send me a thing. These are the ones I'd like to do, and then we can finalize it next week when we know, like, if there's more, multiple people that want to do, and we can talk about it. But I'd rather do it that way than go through it again. I don't want to go through it again. All right, so what's, here's our agenda here, okay? So, we'll do, we'll do a B, C, and D next week. Review and discuss articles for the special town meeting. So, A one is supplemental budget. Is there any chance? Have we heard back from?
So, I checked in with Helen yesterday. I have not received a response back yet. She returned to the country, I believe, on the second. I have not received a copy of the responses.
So, when it comes to, to figuring out the dollar amount that we're going to put into this, do we have a, how do we, how are we going to figure that out?
I have no idea.
Do you want the Select Board to decide on the amount? Do you want to make a recommendation? Do we want to ask Helen what she thinks for the next phase would be? I mean.
Are you asking me?
I am.
I don't know how the board wants to proceed with this. I cannot give you an informed recommendation on a dollar amount. I don't know what it is that you want to do next.
So, I think we need to do an amount of money that gives us some flexibility to figure out what we want to do. I mean, obviously, we need the money in order to be able to ferret through what we want to do, so we need.
While we make decisions about.
We need to make, we need to have some money to be, have some flexibility in what we're going to do, and.
Do we want to give Helen some more time to respond?
Well, we, we're going to have to, we're going to have to, we're either going to have to put a, on a dollar amount in for the handbook by next Tuesday, or have no dollar, or have motion be made at town meeting and see if we can get her to do something with us by, you know, before town meeting where we could put a month, a number in, or we just have to appropriate a particular amount of money and then say, you know, we're going to take another hundred and fifty thousand dollars and to get us to the point where we can figure out what, what, what we want to do.
I would prefer that the board not wait until town meeting. We need this, I, we need this to, in order to do the free cash analysis to finalize the budget.
So, I'm trying to remember, like, in the contract that we had, there were, in the contract that we had, maybe for our, maybe, in the contract that we had with EP, how was their contract broken down before?
So, essentially, the scope that is left is the response, is drafting the response to MEPA, and that's pretty much it. The problem is that MEPA is now told you, has now told you, in order to continue with a CWMP, you have to do a draft EIR, and you have to do a final EIR. How you even do that, how you even do those studies and that analysis for a plan is completely undetermined. It's, it's unprecedented.
Well, I think we have to have DEP come in and talk to us. I mean, I think that's, I think that's.
Are we on the hook for that?
For DEIR and a final EIR?
Great.
If, if you're going to move forward with a CWMP, you are on the hook for that. Which I can't even guess on the cost, but it's probably more than a million dollars.
All right, I can't get in.
Well, I mean, we don't have the response of MEPA yet about what they're, what they're going to say, and so I'm not going to assume. I mean, I think that we can sit down with DEP and have a discussion with them, maybe, about what they mean by all these things, and. I just want to look at their, their contract, the contract that we had with them was structured in a way that there was the needs analysis portion, the, the analysis portion, the development of CWMP, you know, the final CWMP. There were different. There were different public meetings decided.
Project Management, forty-nine thousand, five ninety, public participation, one oh two six, plan of study, thirty-nine six, needs assessment, forty-eight, ID screening in the VAAL, one forty-four nine, formulation of recommended, recommended plan, one seventy-six, sewer advisory, twenty-three four, watershed permit support meetings, fifteen.
So, whatever we're doing now, we're not, I don't, I don't think we're in a place where.
Not formulating, well.
We're not going to do a million dollars for, like, what we think DEP is asking us to do. And.
So, one fifty isn't enough?
No, it, well, but it might be enough to get us to, like, the next town meeting where we have some time, probably two fifty, we probably need two fifty.
Yeah, I was two hundred, two twenty-five.
But then this answers, but I'm just asking the question, if we weren't happy with what we've gotten from Apex so far, then why do we want to sit there and go any further down a rabbit hole with something that we're not happy with?
We're not committing ourselves to Apex or anybody else. We're just committing ourselves to a piece of money in order to take the next steps, whatever we determine, in order, in order to hire a consultant or go out to an RFP or.
You know, we need someone.
Do a watershed permit evaluation. We need to have some funds to be able to do that, so.
And we still have some left to get a response.
Very small.
Very small, to get some kind of a response.
I don't think there's any money. I think it's just.
Yeah, they have, they're on.
It's allocated.
They said that they would provide a response and with what was money is left. We've pretty much, there's no money left.
It's expended. Everything is expended.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't know.
Two fifty I feel more comfortable with.
Yeah, I say we put in two hundred and fifty thousand for continued looking at the watershed, and then we have to kind of figure out how we're going to go about it, and how we're going to talk to DEP about, well, after she tells us exactly what it says that they have to do and what we might be able to respond with. We're going to have to sit down with them and have a discussion.
I think that's too much. I think that's too much to go right now, for right now, and we. and we don't even know what we're going for and what the next steps are. I think we should just take a, a small amount and-
Well, I, the only thing is that originally, we appropriated six hundred thousand dollars. And that was quite a long time ago, and-
Yeah, yeah. The numbers you just read off, though, it sounds like you need at least two.
But-
If we use the whole two fifty-
You don't have to spend it. I mean, you know, you don't have to spend it. And I'm- I don't want to go too low, because then you're constrained and you can't do, you know.
I think, I think the focus should be, I, I, I think two hundred and fifty is too much because, A, we don't know what the next steps are, and I think all we need to know are the next steps. And that doesn't cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to ask, what is the, the next best step?
Well, I, I think the next best step, and I think analysis of whether or not we should be doing a watershed permit or filing a notice of intent on a watershed permit.
Right, I don't think that costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right, so what do you think it should be?
I think that should be just that one next step that allows us to really, really vet exactly what we want to do. Are we going to move forward with a CWMP, or are we just going to take a project and run with it?
I'll make a motion that we support Article number one, and at the motion, we move the town's vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand for the purposes of this article to meet this appropriation, the transfer of the sum of two hundred, two hundred thousand from free cash.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have two hundred thousand from free cash?
Yeah, we have eleven million dollars from free cash. Okay, so that's good. So, we have a motion by Peter and a second by Jean for two hundred thousand. Is there a further discussion? Seeing none. It's roll call. Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Emery.
No.
Melissa. Was that a yes, I guess?
Yes.
She votes yes, so four zero one. Okay, okay. All right. Article two.
Motion that we approve, recommend approval of Article two at the special town meeting.
The wastewater treatment deficit.
Yes, second.
A motion by Peter, second by Jean. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero.
Article three at the special, I recommend approval of these, Article three supplemental budget for the Bourne Middle School chiller.
Second. Chilla.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Emery.
Nope, I mean, yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero.
I have the Article four supplemental budget, share cost sector for FY twenty-five operating budget, recommend approval.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero.
And then the funding is five hundred thousand out of free cash. I, Article five at the special town meeting, transfer of opiate settlement funds, recommend approval of the article, and the amount is to, to transfer is a hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-two cents from the opiate settlement fund general article to said opiate settlement receipt special revenue fund.
Second.
How's the feasibility study going? Maybe we should have that on agenda item, maybe, to update.
It's about wrapped up. It's getting very close to forming recommendations, I believe.
Oh, nice.
Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Okay, so, so we just have those three that you're going to finalize for us for next, next week. Yes. Designate essential and contingent, so essential.
So, I recommend the board designate Articles one through twelve, twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-three as essential.
Motion to approve Articles one through twelve, twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-three as essential for annual town meeting.
Second.
And there are no contingent articles.
Okay, one through twelve. Twenty is administrate, CPC Administrator, twenty-two stabilization, and twenty-three capital stabilization. Okay. Any further discussion? Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. No contingent.
And motion to designate May six, twenty twenty-five at the second night of town meeting, if necessary.
Second.
Any discussion? What if we need a third?
Oh, please.
Jean.
Yes.
Uh, Peter.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Melissa. MJ, yes, five zero zero. Okay. We did the letter for organizations, so town administrators should pull.
The town has received a short extension to continue on the Sagamore Ramp beyond the time of year restrictions with the use of shorebird monitors. We are working closely with the contractors to finish that project as quickly as possible. Conservation and DNR are working with property owners along Phillips Road who will butt the beach regarding the installation of habitat fencing during the nesting season. So far, the town's efforts have been well received, and we are working closely with the property owners to mitigate any potential problems. We will also be installing fencing on Bassett's Island to protect the habitat there as well. We are planning some regular maintenance work on the phones at the police station on Friday, April fourteenth. This will have no impact on nine-one-one calls at all. The police chief will post a public service announcement the day before, just in case anyone experiences a slight delay in getting through on the business line. I do want to let the select board know that we have had approximately three instances so far this year where the signal gates have malfunctioned at the railroad crossing with Academy Drive. The gates are failing in the down position and access has been blocked. We have made it very clear to the railroad operator that if the town needs to respond to an emergency call, we will move the gates regardless of potential damage that may occur to their equipment. The latest failure was approximately forty minutes in duration. I will continue to keep you apprised as we learn more about the railroad's plan to correct this problem.
It happened to me the other night. We had a, an LA person, a neighbor directing traffic, so someone came over from the station to get people out, because I was going off the point to a, to a meeting. It was yesterday.
Residents of Terra Terrace and Eldridge Street have reached out to the DPW director regarding temporary emergency repairs to these private ways. The request will be considered following the local bylaw procedures. The residents have also indicated that they may possibly be petitioning in the future for a betterment and to be taken as public ways. We will continue to update the board on this as more information is received. Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes.
To approve minutes are three fourteen twenty-five, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call. Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Okay. Meeting reports.
Thursday is the next ICWAM building committee meeting, so that, I'll be able to update the board after that. And next Tuesday is Dylan, is the state's delegation, public forum about the bridge update at Mass Maritime Academy.
Auditorium.
Auditorium, where I assume we all will be there before we're coming over to this meeting later on, but at least it'll be a public forum of some sort.
It's a community forum. He's developing a community, bridge community, something like that forum.
It's outreach.
I'm going to, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. South Side Fire Station, our next meeting is the fifteenth, same Tuesday, three in the afternoon.
Correspondence.
Correspondence. For April eighth, two thousand twenty-five, A, DEP letter, Record of Decision, Old K Range, B, Flagpole Gift, C, Mr. Lupton Request for Extension to Taylor's Point Student Parking, D, R Frangai, sorry, Town Bank Form Cape Cod Commission, E, fifty-two, Baxendale Road Pier Ramp and Float Application, F, Upper Cape Tech Meeting Minutes for February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and G, Upper Cape FY twenty-six Budget Info. That's it.
Thank you. Future agenda items related to correspondence and other items for future discussion. So, have, have, did we post for the Cape Cod Commission? Did we ask for things by a certain date? Has that date happened? Is he the only response?
I'm not sure the date has passed. I'll check.
Okay. So, we should, if the date has passed, we could put that on an, the next agenda. If not, we can wait until the date has passed for that. On the flagpole gift, front in Kalamet, do we want to have an agenda item to discuss that? I mean, they're asking permission to use town property, right?
It's in the middle of the, that intersection, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that Little Island.
That Little Island.
Yeah, yeah. It's kind of a back road kind of area. I went by it tonight, so it's-
Yes, Quatique.
Yeah, it's mystery.
River Road and, yeah.
Yeah.
Mystery Lane.
Yeah. Well, we'll put it on agenda. See when they can come. Other, I, so, next week, I'd like to do the signed articles. I had a question about the safety in front of the Pecasset Village Association. Apparently, they put a sign up. Has there been any other discussion about the lighting? Do we want to have a, have that as an agenda item to hear and talk about options or?
Yeah, because I know DPW was working on some of the lighting options for over there.
Yeah, let's just put it on agenda and have a, so we don't know about CWMP yet. So, another thing that had come up was the town of Falmouth, their watershed people had asked about a letter of support for, not for betterments, but, well, for, for, you can get septic credits on your taxes. You can get a tax refund. Only, it's only up to the amount of tax you owe, and they want to make it refundable so that if you put eighteen thousand dollars in your septic, you can get more than just your five hundred dollars of tax. So, so I'd like to put that in an agenda item, just so we can talk about whether or not we want to do an agenda item. And that's been kind of sitting there for a while, so that-
Is this for, I, I'm, are these for next week?
Yeah, I think next week, there was a couple things that you already had on there for next week, and then-
We may have an, an incoming item if we get an email by Thursday or so for that Bourne baseball issue.
Right. So, I'm just asking if people are interested in having this.
I'm so confused right now. Okay, we're talking about April fifteenth.
We're talking about April fifteenth, assigning articles.
Right.
Maybe having an update in the Barlow's Landing Road, maybe talking about the septic tax credits, and maybe talking about the Kalamet flagpole request. Those are, they're not big items. We're, pretty much everything else is done, so. And I think, I forget what else is on there. What's, what's our page? Eighty-two for that list?
But can any of it wait?
Yeah. I mean, so, but then, when we have the May thirteenth meeting, it's really basically the next meeting.
Right.
So, April fifteenth and then May thirteenth. The legislative update is June third. So, we, all the legislators couldn't make it to May fifteenth. So, we had the social equity on June third, so I think I'm going to shift that to the May thirteenth and then do the legislative update on the thirteenth.
On the third.
On, yeah, June third will be the legislative update. And I have, for May thirteenth, I have social equity, building committees, and charter review, like establishing that charter review.
Is the Falmouth, the tax thing, is that, is that something that Dave Viera was spearheading? Was that the same?
Maybe, yes. I don't, I think, I, I, I think it would be not a heavy lift to, like, just talk about it and say what-
Yeah, I, I just, I have no information on it.
Yeah, I'm, but it's, I think I set it out a long time ago.
I remember, I vaguely remember, yes, yes.
And it's kind of been like, we haven't had Jalen to do it, so, and I'll work on other things. Is there anything else? Yeah, we'll get you some information on it. Okay, and I'll, I'll kind of ferret it out.
So, for the, for the fifteenth, should I arrange to have the flagpole donation petitioners come, and should I arrange to have DPW there?
If DPW is ready to do the Barlow's Landing to make a report, yes, to talk about that. And the flagpole request, I'm okay with putting that off. I mean, we just got it, and it's not, it's not, you know, it's not critical, so we could just ask them when they might, I mean, I don't know how when you want to do it. You could do it in May, you could do it in June. I mean, sometimes it's better when people write to just kind of do it.
I don't think the flagpole is going to be that big of a lift. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Why don't we ask them if they'd like to come, and if they'd like to come next, on the fifteenth. And if they can come, then we'll hear them. Okay. All right, then. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Can I ask one more question for next week? We have discussion regarding drafting letter to MBI regarding expectation for gap and bead. Is that on for the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sign articles, review handbook, finalize motions and recommendations. Sign the conservation restriction for the Austin property. We have to sign that final documentation so we can get actually reimbursed the million dollars, so. So, we definitely want to do that. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero, eight forty-six.